I said, you take this thing there, why don't you do this here? He says, they're not good. You think we hired you and did this, so why don't you do our own? They won't tell me. But a small person told me that they are old, they don't want us to go. Here is the man who, this is the man we need, for we to go to this. Tell me, why you have to go to this? Is that so? That is where our end is. Mine are begging you. Do not say you don't care about Nigeria. Your role is to help to build a better Nigeria. Your role is to help to change the place. Because you have what it takes, I've said it to you people who are here. You do not need anybody in Nigeria. So you can help to ensure that there's good government there. You are going to be the beneficiary. You should be the beneficiary of this, what I'm saying, it's you. I live in the UK with an Indian. Who went back to India and built a factory. Employing people, I was in my house was sixty-four. He went to India and built a factory. And what he producing then was a part of the UK. He put on, use mortgage his house. I went to build a factory. A factory is creating job, is helping people in India. He is making producing something, which is sell in the UK, he is making money from it. If you make mistake today of mortgaging your house and selling one home, you'll start everything, you are finished. You have been this. And when you come back, I will tell you, oh, this is where I jumped into well, that is why I'm begging you. It's study upon study. Let me go, we want to end. We want to change the place. If you change this, you might come back as investors. It will be a win-win. You want to go to the village where you can build a factory. Your relations are working in the factory, they are earning a living from it. The factory is also making you richer, because it is investment from your hard earned job, where you have mortgaged your house here, where you have done this. When they are starting this, the foreigners will follow you. Foreign investment is a big and hard. If you keep running here, these will come. Nobody goes to Afghanistan to go and invest. Nobody goes to Somalia, the motherland good, and all eloquent, they are present peace. So when I see people say, we are going now to go and do some foreign investment, how? There are embassies here now. The purpose of the embassies is to tell them whether you're doing well or not. So why are you going there when you are? It is not doing well, the embassies will tell them, there's one here, everybody wrong. So don't go there, it wastes everybody's time. They will even know, because you are putting one G. When they ask me in Washington about this, they are telling me, about the foreign policy, they are telling me, your foreign policy is as strong as your domestic policy. You have respect when you have strong economy, organized, robust financial system. And all these things you see, they are grading G seven, G eight, G ten, G twenty, is our economy. If you are happy, you are putting one G, if you are not, you become G less. And my intelligence that you have to start being a member of the G. That shows you are doing well. And now it can be brought to something you can see. It's going to be tough. That's what I want to talk to the public. It's not going to be easy. I'm begging you people, be part of it. Prof have told you, Prof have been rolling around, he been doing this thing, he been doing that thing, rolling around for years, tried to do this. I already tell you that this one we doing, there is a problem. He has to make sure he does not fail. But this is the last party. Yes, he gets the strength, and people say, well, listen, you've tried. Even magnet, they don't do it here, and this is an old man who is mad. So he gets the strength, people say to you, Prof, you have to stop. John, you must do it right. It is not going to be this. We are not asking to that it will change overnight, it will take time. All we want to do is to hire somebody. Where we say we are moving from point A to B, and we are sure we can see that movement, A to B. It's visible, it's measurable, and we are in that direction. We are not asking for too much. Just be in that direction, we are agreed. We are not going to be happy. I tell everybody, today, you people are singing about this guy. None of you, none of us is going to benefit so. Nobody will be happy individually. I've been governor for eight years, you can go and ask, no edit was happy with me in Anambra State. Even today, they are not seen as happy with me. Go and ask, and I don't, I don't feel it, I don't, because I know, I go to Abuja and everything, and the president, all the people will tell me that nobody is happy with you. And I say, no problem. I promise to fix school. That was my campaign promise, and I moved school from number twenty-six to number one, I did for my happiness. There was a question yesterday, I spoke at an event that Sunday happened. Yesterday in Washington, I told them, I said, if you want to be happy, wait, when you sleep, flare from funeral go. My job is to make people happy. My job is to fix the system. My job is to secure the people. So I was, if you go to every community in Anambra State, I was paying directly from government post. Indigenous, of every community, both all of them, very, and I was paying everybody over seventy-five years. Esteban. But I wasn't giving money to those who used to share it before. They tried everything. I'm beating Abuja where they said, beat Abuja, everybody invite them for a drink, just to tell them that I'm not really fighting. I'm not running their bank, they want to. So nobody will ever tell you that in eighty years of being governor, people report in a bottle of wine. No, that is bad. Because, look, I need the money to fix school. I need to fix hospital. Not celebration. Anybody wants to celebrate. So the same thing, tell you, play everyone. I will secure your life, but you are not going to be individual happy. But I'll make sure that you come and you can go. Finally, please help us. Those who still want, you can also help to check them. Because one way I say so, I have been born, I've travelled everywhere to the world, from South Africa, to London, to Plaques, everywhere. When you arrive, you will shock with these Nigerians, who tell them, it's because they have bought their house here, it's because they have bought here, you can buy here. Why would people buy a house from that? You live in a very, so you to own a house in the world. I'm just here for one night. I'll leave tomorrow. And everybody who have not missed, is I've been coming to Atlanta, at least I come maybe once every year or that. I have never stayed in this town more than one night. And that one night cannot cost you more than three hundred dollars. So tell me why a person who will need to spend, let's say five hundred dollars, let's say it comes two times in a year, so it's about one thousand dollars, so in a, in a, every year he spends one thousand dollars, but he goes to use about one million dollars to buy a house, keep it empty, and then pay taxman and everything, twenty or thirty thousand dollars to keep it. That's all the wrong, sickness. And our people are encouraged. And when it comes to that, say, Dean has warning, even call the pastors to come and pray. You will go, and all of you will have tell me this, please, I beg you, call police. You know where the money comes from? They did not tell you they used to have the money before. I used to have money before, but I have not used my hand any money to buy an empty house, not to be anyone. It's not possible. That are not what man, they are not back. These are things we can do. And I tell my children something, because those who are helpless, we can help them. All these things you see me this night, taking your time, and I'm thanking you for the sacrifice. It is twenty twenty-three. It will not be about Christ. Do not fall for me because I'm an evil man. Do not fall for you because I'm from southeast. Don't fall for me because I'm a Christian. Don't. The North don't have better electricity. Castings don't sell because president is from casting. Nigerian people go to Canada. It is not so good anything, the North is insecure. The poor people in the North are not buying bread cheaper. Same thing in the southeast, same thing in the southwest. So it's not a cyber issue. There are no way Christians buy rice cheaper or bread cheaper, or they have a road they can drive, and it's not only for Christians. It's our tongue. For the people that is their tongue now, do they have a disrupted electricity? Because it's their tongue, so it's not our tongue. It's not our connection. There's eighteen of us contesting to be president. What I want you to do is not to say, you're evil man, listen to eighteen of us. Not through proxy, nobody should send anybody to come and tell you. They have to come specifically, they see the man. I understand you well, I understand now, I'm telling you what the one for you. That's what we want to do, that's our elections that run all over the world. You listen to Biden, you listen to Bush, you listen to Obama, you listen to, that's how it's run everywhere. It's only in Nigeria that some people are running around, some people are sitting there. The people, the people, and they tell you that is why, it's their entitlement, it's my tongue. It's not going to be, dropping to the three election. It's going to be our character we control. Our competence, our capacity, and commitment to start building a better Nigeria. Thank you, I promise.
Isn't that awesome? Atlanta, isn't that awesome? If your economy is good, you are invited to the G group. And if your economy is bad, you are G less. Nigeria, it is time for us to be in the G group. It is indeed a wonderful evening. It is indeed why we are here. We have come and we have listened, and we have seen the direction we are here in. And we are sure that in the hands of Okute, Nigeria will be strong again. And it is our prayer, and our prayer is answered. Our prayer is answered today because the man who got us a trust in with lifting Nigeria, with restoring the faith of the average Nigerian, is here with us. Now we have questions and answers. We have gone around and collected questions from you. I am going to call on Dr. Anne Damisa to come and reach some of the questions. Please mind you, we collected over thirty questions. A committee have reviewed these questions, they have synthesized the questions, and have come up with some questions, the answers have already been given by Okute in town. Now we are going to ask the questions, there is summary of most of the questions asked. Dr. Damisa, please.
First question we have here is from Felix Almo from Florida, Your Excellency. It reads, how would you reverse the trend of medical tourism, hemorrhaging billions of dollars from the Nigerian economy, and under the vast intellectual capital of Nigerian legacies and nurses in diaspora? Do you want to read all the questions? The second question is from Dr. Titus Obura, is asking, Mr. Obi, how will you go about finding the right people to serve in your government? The last question is from Professor Fredo Lynn Anunoby. It reads, what do you really think the role of Nigeria in the global economy is now? And what role would you like Nigeria to play in the global economy, once you assume a position as Nigerian president?
Please get seated, please get seated. Please sit down for him to answer the questions, please. Please sit down, please sit down.
President, yeah. I think, yeah, issue of medical tourism. Issue of medical tourism is very easy to face. You can go and look at the seventies and the eighties. If people were actually coming to Nigeria for medical tourism, it's a question of reversing that situation by investing in the health sector. When you invest in the health sector, you reverse that trend. People ask me, but we have all our doctors out. But we do this, and I tell them, if you go to the UK, I don't know very well about America, if you go to the UK today, if you have ten doctors, you probably have about sixteen or sixteen Indians, Nigerians, everything. Yes, people are going to India, what did they do? Invested money, trained more doctors, trained more healthcare staff and everything. So they have enough to support, enough to give it on the continent, that we can do in Nigeria. We just have to start in the right room, start the keeping our facilities. And we have now a lot of top medical people outside Nigeria, that we can tap their bread on what we are going to do. That's why I said that, bread, trade, we're going to tell you, break game. Nothing that is, this time I've come and tell you, to tell you what the problem is. Eventually, I need to come back and learn from you what we need to do. Don't just support the person to be this and go away. When I was governor, I have an idea what I wanted to do. I brought it, and now listening, how we can bring the right people to work with you. These types of people have read, read what my chief of staff, from South Africa roads, and they were shocked that the professionals that work with me were swarming. I didn't know sixty percent of them, I never met them before, including her. We went down and hired the best we could, worked with the best. And whatever anybody can say, we achieved today. The only thing we achieved was because we worked with the best people. In Houston, I showed them a lady that I never met before, I said that I know that one of the class one in Crafty King College in Los Angeles. It was an overseas, what we call higher school there. And she became something that was a start that while I was governor. And it treated me, but I know so many guys who said to me, young man, you're strong, you're wrong. And I always call her senior teacher, tell me I am wrong, and he will show me. Leadership and learning is inseparable, and when I had the right people, I listened to them, I went to also go around, the way I'm going now, to start the prayer of Nigerians, all over the world, on how we can do it better. And I know they are there. And they offer it, some will offer it, it will shock you, add you the fastest teaching hospital ever in Nigeria. And how did it happen? Just to show you how you can doubt his prayer. In Nigerian Medical Council, one day came up, and said that our medical school would be closed. The medical school of our state university would be closed. And I said, why? They said, we have no teaching hospital, you can't run the medical school that is teaching hospital. I said, can I please, thank you people, we have students who are in year one, students in year two, students in year three, students in year four. What are we going to do today? They said, I can graduate everything, or not accept us. I said, okay, can I build a medical school in two years? They said it's impossible, you want to go in Nigeria. I said, just give me two years, I'll build a medical school. The chairman, the leader, said, please, since this boy said he's kneeling down, maybe that's what I said, I'm kneeling down, maybe, for the sake of those children, since this boy said he's kneeling down, let him a chance. And he left for office, and I invited all professors of medicine from Anambra State. So I want to see them within the nest for eight hours. Professor Korm, Professor Waka, helped me, they assembled about eighteen, sixteen eighteen of them, and they get together. And I told them, this is my problem, I want to build a teaching hospital in two years. You people will be the architects of the building. You will be the consultants, you will be everything. Because we must do it for the sake of these children. And I don't want to pay you people, you do it for free, your contribution for these twenty states. Whenever you come, I'll give you lunch, or nothing, please. And now you will be expecting, you will shock, these are men who are so sophisticated in their life, they said to me, we'll do it. And every week, one of them will come to expect what we are doing. In two years, he delivered a teaching hospital, oh my, a teaching hospital, okay. We have to give them something over the world that can help us in every area. We have Nigerians in the world that can help us in every area. I went to South Africa, they showed me that a Nigerian was involved in doing a designing Cape Town airport. I decided to go to his office. I don't know him, he doesn't know me, I was the governor. I came there, I would tell you, and the story that happened that I came there in the United States, who was this in South Africa then? I go to his office, and I went there, I said, I want to see the Nigerian, who they say owns this shop. He came out, I said, I'm governor of this, I'm from Anambra State. He hugged me and said, hello, sir, I'm from Nibo. I said, you know what I'm going to do? They said, you are going in this, your company said, yes. You're going to help us. They hotel the scene I have today. Another hotel is what I built, couldn't be shopping mall in the north, he designed it. He still was next to nothing, he said, this is the least I can do to help my state. We have talents everywhere. John Mulelo here, he did a heart center in Anadzie. All of you know how me and John Mulelo went to do that. I came to Anadzie, I never met John Mulelo before, before he came governor, I didn't know who he is, I came here. They said he can do hard surgery, this thing, I asked him, I asked, I said, have we seen him? They said he's at war. I said, let's pass through where he's working, so I can see his face, this is from Anadzie. And I met him, and I said, doctor, why not we do a heart center in your village? Call it Willow Center, and you come there for the time to die. Even if you don't put your village, you treat your heart, we can move on, that's like this. John Mulelo offered, we went there, built the facilities, here to bring the equipment. Every year he comes there to wear. Every year, he comes there twice, right in a year, to do three operations. Do, is the, is the person that's helping southeast today is here. So you can see, we have people who are coming, like they want to help. And that's what we want to do. We have a lot of them who are doing a good work. Whenever you invite them and say, come and do this, they will come. And that's what we want to do. We have people here, don't give the same. Right? So that's what we want to do. I'm going to use the Nigerians all over the world. Let me have you, if you have seen China, I bet you they're vicious. They're not vicious, they're using small cost. And we're going to use them as, not just to advise. We're going to bring the best people. India did it. India, India today is Dr. Singh, my right economist, Mahal Singh. He was the best economist, the best professor, the lost one. They took him to India. We have them here, we bring them back. I said, you know that, when I listened to the commissioner, I said, my chief professor was professor. Why you went there and said this thing? Professor Stella, your professor, not professor. So go and find your colleague professor, so he can confess about this. And she would do this. Because I'm not the professor, just I'm a therapist. I told him that, say, poor man, your job is to, I said, good, do the shattered brains, leave implementation to me. Whatever you go right, that is, the people said, you're wrong, I said, it's the professor who told you. And that's how the society has developed. Everywhere, you have people who are willing to do the political work. You have people who are focused, who are dealing with this. And it just to come, and it cannot change, and let nobody tell you, oh, Nigeria is a corrupt, it cannot change. You can change. It was, it is the same teachers who were teaching when we were number twenty-six. They were can they go? And we're teaching when we were number one. We didn't hire people. We just changed the attitude, superstition, everything. If you go to, they go to Addis. This is John Wilo's place again. You go to the vendor of Addis, they change schools, we didn't change teachers. You go to Laurent Addis, they change school, we didn't change teachers. It's still my being, but the schools changed. Everything changed. That's what we have to do with Nigeria. You have a leader who has the confidence and the capacity to insist on the right thing. Those things will change. So what we do in the global, I'm talking about global economy. This is how human being is. If you're doing well, you're fighting. If you're not doing well, nobody fights you, then even as individual. Nobody goes out there, you're fighting for what are not doing well to yourself. No, because no one liability. They fight if you're doing well. You know, so they know you are going to offer something. It's that thing called the global economy. First deal with your domestic issues. Stabilizing, Nigeria used to be the chief peacekeeper for Africa. We're doing the peacekeeping, when we were helping, we had resources. America, everybody, if there's one problem, they call us, go and keep peace here. Now we are no longer well, nobody calls us. So what we have to do is to fix ourselves, they go what they used to be. And if you come for the global economy, I was very confident, when they do that, do, all the G meetings, they call present us as Africa, they don't call us. Because they know you're not well. They know you are insecure. Nobody invites president of Somalia, Afghanistan, they will, no. You fix your place, and people will come, and I assure you, in four years, you'll see the sign.
Thank you very much, sir. Before the next round of questions, please, if you're driving a Honda Pilot with license plate M A D A. M A D A is license plate, please move it. M A D A license plate of a Honda Pilot. M A D A, don't shoot your husband on the road. Husband's bullet. Go and move that bullet, quick, quick, quick. M A D A, please move your bullets. Move your bullet, please. The next round of questions, we have another three or four questions by Chief Man Tomala, you have the next questions, please.
This question is from Remake Kenai. Most of our people in the north are farmers. What are your plans for farmers? The second question is from Chairman Pauline. What will your administration do to motivate children of diasporic to come home?